I'm just going with the computers and that's what's being recorded, so that's gonna be my evidence if I get called on it. Uh, I'm calling the Village of Cross Plains Board of Trustees, meeting of June twenty sixth, order, roll call please.
Rusty Brad.
Chairman.
Rusty Brad.
Here.
Rusty Barcar, yeah, Mr. Barclun. Justin Paul Cosby. It's walking, uh, do you have where, here, does that link though?
Here. The stand for a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the Constitution, with liberty and justice for all.
They were at a public comment, this is an opportunity for anyone to address the village board on any issue. Please observe the time limit of three minutes while the village board encourages input from residents that may not discuss. Or act on any issue that is not duly noticed on the agenda. Do we have anybody? Who do you have up there, anybody?
Nope.
Alrighty. Go to the consent agenda, upon request of any trustee, any item that may be removed from the consent agenda. For separate consideration under general business, does anybody have any item that they would like to remove? Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. I have a motion in the second to approve the consent agenda, any discussion? Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I, all opposed, same? So move. We go to reporter villages officers, I have nothing to add that's already on the agenda.
I have nothing.
There. Any other trustee would like to add something? Alright, we'll go to village administrator.
Okay, two quick updates, um, I just wanted to let everybody know that the village library board has made a selection related to the new library director position. Um, Elizabeth Claus will be reporting to the village on July the third. Um, it was Pam's last day on Friday. Um, so Elizabeth will be joining the village on July third, um, so we'll have a meeting set up with her shortly to get her acclimated everything, village of Cross Plains. Um, my second update, um, the shared revenue, uh, legislation, and as I mentioned at a prior, uh, village board meeting. Uh, Bobby and I attended the local government day in, uh, Madison. Um, there is an update, um, just a week ago, uh, the legislature and the governor. Uh, passed the shared revenue, uh, proposed legislation, I included some materials in your packet. To kind of see the, uh, logistics of that legislation. Um. Kind of a quick synopsis, it's about a twenty percent minimum, uh, increase for all municipalities across the state. Um, so as more information shared with the village, we'll bring you up to speed on the one that is known.
Can you repeat Elizabeth's last name again?
Claus.
Like C L A U S?
Uh, K L A U S S, I believe.
Alright, thank you very much, village department heads, I, we have Chief Tony.
Good evening. Um, first of all, I wanna, uh, start by saying thank you to all of you for running because. We're gonna have to make some really tight decisions here soon, and you're gonna be getting some of the work that we've been doing for the last. Um, six months. Um, and some of the, some of the tough decisions are gonna be surrounding our building, and we already, just recently, we had some building code violations. Um, that we had to correct, and we did correct in our budget. Um, we've also had some garage door issues where the doors aren't opening, and, um, that can be a. Big issue when we have an emergency and we can't get those things built, and so. We have all that corrected, the other thing that, that you guys will be dealing with will be wages, um, I was. Um, allowed to share that one of our officers who's been here five years for renting up. Um, so drastically that she literally uses one whole paycheck to just pay for that rent. So she's, she's struggling right now, and so she, she allowed me to share that, that, you know, that is. Something where she's gotta make some tough decisions, so I'm glad that you guys are taking on this, this project. Uh, secondly, I wanna apologize the cops grant, uh, with the shortage that I have with staff and the major caseload that we have. Going on right now, um, I had to, I had to prioritize and I put that aside, so I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna have to wait till July next year. Um, it's, it's very time consuming to try to get that cost grant and, and make us actually competitive for such a, a, a grant. Uh, it's very hard to get as it is, and I don't wanna, I don't want it shorted, so, um, I decided that, that I couldn't get it done. Uh, for example, right now, we're at about sixteen hundred calls, um, for the year, and. Uh, if you remember some of my reports in two thousand nineteen, the year before I took over, they had sixteen hundred calls for the year. So we're already there now, and we're not even done, so, we're not even done with our six months, so extremely busy, uh. I, I, I think along and on, but. Um, I wanted to, I also got permission to update you of our officer that was on medical leave, she is back. Um, on light duty, um, we are, uh, fulfilling that, that need, and, and she's coming in handy because, because of how short we are. She's helping us out with, with a lot of light duty. Um, we are, uh, because of her, uh, un- inability to be able to drive, we are commuting her back and forth to work, but. But we're making it work, so it, it's working out. Um, I just wanna give you a little food, uh, for thought as we move into the capital improvement, our squad sixteen and seventeen, if. I'd like for Nikki to show up right now, the sixteen is knocking, so I mean, we've got some kind of knock in, in our. We're stacking miles as much as we can, but because we're gonna need. Few squads, we, we've almost spent about twenty thousand dollars since I've been here, just to keep those squads running. I did already do a, uh, I like a free, how much that's gonna cost us, um, they're about sixty thousand dollars a squad. Um, that would include if we go to the hybrid model, which is what. Uh, is being recommended now, I did get an opportunity and so did all my staff, they go all. Um, and you are in back with, with hybrid models, um, we also had a conversation with the, um. The coordinator or the director of, 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 of the squads in Madison, and, and they are liking the hybrid model, so that. Does a lot better with efficiency, a lot better with mileage, a lot better with idling, all of the things that, that we do, so. About a, almost about a three thousand dollar, um, increase, but that would fall within that sixty. Which you can pretty much, uh, take out that, and then, then, then the fun thing, uh, we added a citizenship program, um. Award program and, um, we awarded, um, several. At the schools, uh, Saint Francis, we had a couple of kids, Natalie Benson and Zachary. Mike Hall that won that award, uh, Park, we had Abigail Sutherland. Um, at Lasure Creek, we had Isaac Xander and Lindsay Meyer. And then for our community awards, they went to Doc Esther and Katie Rip. Um, and basically, it's just about being citizen respectful, helping the community, um, these, the, the school, um, awards were, uh, chosen by the staff. Um, the citizenship awards were chosen by our department, so about the communities. So that's a, a fast and quick update, but I just wanted to kind of give you a little update of where we are.
Alright, thank you very much. Jerry?
Hello. Uh. Well, uh, Tony alluded to it, um, and you got it in your pack tonight. Staff is, got their. Legion compensation plan, oh, in front of you. Um. We'll discuss that more later. Or another meeting, whichever. Just wanna reiterate, read through it. Dazed, confused, be followed. Please reach out, um, to. Brian, Bobby, myself. Chief Tony, Mike, any of us. Uh, if we're not the right person for the particular question, we'll. Circulate it amongst ourselves and, and find the answer, um, for you. There. Little bit too careful. Hilarities in our department, so, uh, some of the questions may end up being department specific. Um. My other big news has to do with the E O C M A R, or that's an agenda item for later, so we'll talk about that then. Um. Otherwise, we're just plugging away.
When does brewery street like, like really get?
Uh, well, they're supposed to be here the week of the tent to. Start trap work, saw cutting, getting organized, moving equipment in. Um, then they're gonna start really throwing dirt around on Monday, the seventeenth. They're gonna be starting with, uh. Uh, Brewery Road and Park Street at the same time. And, uh. I was very happy with the, uh, with the, uh. Pre-construction meeting, they put the contractors, you know. They're working pretty good, they seem to have their act together. One last thing, um. The well three project. Favorite customers was in the consent calendar, so this one isn't on the agenda. Uh. The, we received notice that the generator has been believed further for well three, they're not. Talking about better market. In order to. Get three online, you know, usable condition and, uh. Have backup power, uh, we're. I met with them today, uh, then being Portson, the general contractor, Sound Country. And the electrical people. The electrical someone. Uh, we're gonna be putting together some information to discuss at our next construction meeting, which should be the. Third Wednesday of July. So look for an update at your July meeting, uh, we're hoping to have a game plan then. This, uh, really monkey wrenches the rehab of well two. Which is. You know, we've been on borrowed time, I think, for years, so. They don't like stretching out too much further.
They don't think we can raise the water rates to let private. They don't have any.
Right, they have to pay the final bill. Before they will, uh. Assess what can buy the cost or is, is used back into the, uh, the risk.
Do you think a lot of people are watering their lawns or not, really?
Um, probably just up. Um, not. Whatever, all drastically. Uh. But. You know, look, we're talking about May, May is typically high anyway, there's people that have pools or fill in pools and stuff like that, so. Um, we'll see what June is when they get the readings here in a couple of weeks. But, uh. It's up some. Yeah, we're fine as far as changing water. It's not any better than growing water, uh.
Alright, next one question, did the test that was being done for the holding tank go well on Dragan last Thursday, was that person testing them?
That was an inspection, oh. We just had to lower the water level enough so they could see the interior to check the condition of the paint. Look at, uh. There's. Fan rust series, things like that. Um. The verbal preliminary report. Is, uh, favorable. But I'm not. I'm not really ready to admit anything, so I see the written report and the actual pictures.
Yeah.
But it, the verbal report from the inspector sounds favorable.
Alrighty, thank you, might just stay up here, the first item is. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Alright, um, I just wanna update everyone on the banking RFP, that was a couple of months ago, that, uh. Supposed to be working on that, so what I did was I reached out to. Several day company communities that, hey, you have an example of a RFP you've done in the last few years. But I didn't get to every worry with the water. And the answer that I got back were, we've never done this, we use our local bank, or we use elders to help us with this. So then I reached out to elders and then he said, can you give me a, you know, like a cost estimate, how much you charge me for this service? And I've been working with them back and forth, but people there on vacation, I was on vacation, um, so, just letting you know, I'm still working on. Getting a quote on how much that would cost to do that, because I figured, um, we might as well. Price out doing a full RFP, um, and then our assessors, um. I got reached out to from a different accessory asking if we were interested in, uh, switching. And so I kind of was talking back and forth with them, because we have to let associate know by July first, we have certified mail if we're gonna. Um, not do our auto redo for next year. Um. But again, the guy from me after it didn't get back to me, didn't get back to me, then I was on vacation last week, and then he emailed today, and he's like, well, do you have time to speak, and that's. Well, I can't get it on my board agenda anymore. Um, so I'm probably just gonna tell him. You know, I'll meet with you and maybe. Okay, switching, or not switching, but you make RFP next year for twenty two thousand. So I got you, Donald's two important things.
Alright, thank you. Alright, okay, Mike?
Just wanted to, uh, give a quick update, why don't you hear the, uh. Last meeting you had approved, uh, new recreation and the fire supervising. And that person, it's now, I got a person decline, I was taking the position after you had approved it. So on the back, the ground board and the guys to draft the decision. I'm also still, um, I have not posted, I plan to still post, but I have not posted, because I have not, um. Really put into the black coordinator office for the summer camp. Questions. I have been spending a lot of time. And. Spent three and a half hours, I can't today, so, you know, so you all know, your director was. Watching kids for three and a half hours a day. The pool in general has been going fairly well, uh, staff's been stepping up, doing a lot of extra things there, which is nice. The, um, memberships are right around there, we have been over the past, you know, past year, but I have noticed that I feel like, uh. Uh, daily fees are actually up in comparison to others now, it's been dry, it's been warm, it's been hot, I think a lot of people were planning to not get memberships and do the daily pass because they were worried about poor quality throughout the summer. Uh, that's what I heard from someone, somebody parents that have had them in the past, uh, but, but so far, so good, uh, and I just do. Do the pool vessel, the old filters are still working, I've had some clarity issues at the beginning of the summer. Uh, fixed that, because we wanted to do with just a lot of that, a lot more vacuuming that needed to be. Get a place, so. That's been good, um, and the only other thing is the coral decided that if they wanna run anymore, uh, less of the best, we use all, we do all, we went for all hands, for all the rubber, you know, those types of things. Uh, the mortar actually looked a lot different, so we ordered a new mortar for that, and this just gives you an idea of how important our support staff really is. Uh, Joe Purseform will actually be taking the old mortar out of the coral, putting a new one in, uh, which the mortar in itself costs us point about a hundred dollars. Uh, so the labor and work that would have been done would probably double that, uh, on top of that, so just kind of showing you, you know, that our staff does do above and beyond, you know, the rolling of just off the streets and doing things, so. Uh, just to have one, you know, conversation.
Alright, we will go into general business. First item is discussion and possible action approval of the twenty twenty two C Mar.
Uh, twenty twenty two C Mar, we. Had an absolute failure on our influence. Loadings for V O D biological oxygen demand. Um. What happened is. Uh. Member of. Twenty one. We had some contractors here looking at the. What well area in preparation to put together. Uh. Game plan and. Creates our P documents for installing the mixer that was planned for the well. During. And I still haven't figured out how, I'll never figure it out. Somehow during their inspections and nosing around down there, the. Location of the pickup point for the raw sampler. Got moved. Got moved to a dead area. Not in the main channel. Most still went down the main channel, but for the end of it was, was in a. Kind of a dead area that accumulates solids. So our loading for the, we didn't catch this until spring. Uh, our loading rate was off the charts for New Year, the. Well, they are the actual sample results, but they're an erroneous indicator of. What was actually coming to the plant. So we've got that. Uh, the good thing is. Even though we had that disaster. Um. We had no problem eating any of our F weapons, which is what really matters. So once you get past the first page. For things. Uh. So that's for twenty twenty two, uh, I'm gonna give you a heads up right now. That. Late January, early February, we received something. Don't know what. At the plant, came in through the gnarled floor. We did some looking in manholes, we could never find any evidence of where or what it was. It was. Little bit of a milky color. Uh. Created some foam. But anyway, the long story short is it really raised hell with our microorganisms. Um, just within the last two weeks, I think. We're getting back to where we need to be. Uh, so far, we have not had a. Violation, but. We don't have all of our latest test results back yet either. So. Um. That has been a struggle. Um, all late winter, all through the spring. Um. And we don't know what is causing it or where it's going. Where Steve, we theorize that it's a. Disinfected leaning agent. Maybe. That, uh, was coming from somewhere, we don't know where. Maybe somebody had. The volume of that that they're getting rid of, like just pouring it down the drain. But, uh, it's been a challenge. Yes, favorite question.
So the failure, do, do they require us to show improvement or changes, or, I mean. Did we fail or did we did, yeah?
Um, if you'll look, I wrote a reply to, uh, the summary page. Or the resolution page, it's the very last page. Is there in the file? And because it did not affect the discharge. Limits, we didn't exceed any of our discharge limits. Uh, that's all that they're requiring for this issue. Is that explanation of what happened?
Okay, so there's no fine or.
No.
Instant requirement of.
Okay.
So.
No, if we're gonna have a disaster, that was the perfect place to have it at.
So when you said this was affecting the microorganisms, did that kill on the wall, wouldn't it?
Yeah. Maybe not. They're killing a percentage of them, but wounding enough that it affected the tree.
Alright, do I have a motion to accept the twenty twenty two C Mar?
I'll make a motion to approve the report as presented.
I have a motion and a second to approve the twenty twenty two C Mar report, any discussion?
Just, go ahead. No, quick one, that sensor that got moved or whatever, has it been, assuming moved back or?
Yeah.
Okay, so that unlikely to happen again next year or whatever.
No, we know what to look for now, um. Uh, and it was. We found that when. The contractor was there, uh, we. In, uh. April. To put together his game plan for installing that mixer that's supposed to show up in a couple of weeks. Um. That's when we found that. Even though the, where the hose entered the water. Right where it's been for the last twenty years, but the. End that extends out. Where the actual portal is that pulls the sample from, that's what got moved and lodged. Where's the point at?
Yep. Alright, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same, so move, thank you. Number two, discussion, village compensation strategy, can I take it, that's the report?
That is correct.
You wanna do a run, Jerry, how do you wanna handle it, you wanna do a rundown or just feel any questions or?
Brian was gonna start it off, right?
Sure.
Okay, the overview.
Yeah. Um, so.
He did the final compilation, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
So thank you again, uh, everyone for the opportunity to allow us to take a look at this, um, again, this was a. More or less a five month process that the. Village department heads have, uh, been diligently working to pursue, uh, to get something before you. Uh, tonight, prior to the, uh, board. Budget approval process, um, in the coming months. Um, so more or less, we had a discussion. Um, again, based upon some of the feedback that the village has received over the last few years related to departures. Um, some of the things that the, uh, village staff has heard, village departments has heard about stabilization of. Uh, retention of village staff, things that village staff would like to see for a vision going forward within the community. Um, and just, um, overall, some things that we felt might as well be addressed at the same time as far as some. Um, upgraded positions, um, market value position, um. Uh, updates for, uh, current staff, uh, as part of a overall comprehensive strategy. Um, so tonight, this was kind of a. First stab at doing and, and giving you the information that we came up with. Um, there's a lot of information here, so again, like Jerry said. As you have questions, feel free to bring those forward. Um, if we can't get you answers tonight, we'll definitely do some research and try to bring those answers back at the next board meeting for you. Um. Uh, again, this is quite comprehensive, there's a lot of things to discuss, um. Hopefully you all had an opportunity to take a look at that. Um, and again, this is intended to be a discussion tonight, so, um, uh, by all means, let's. Go ahead and hear what questions, concerns, or feedback you might have, and we can. You know, continue our, our process of ironing. You know, continue our our process of ironing this out for the village.
Well, I guess I'll start. Uh, I'm looking at what you referred to step raises. It's basically ten raises that go from year two to year eighteen. With a a total of uh thirty percent. To me, that seems like it's strictly a longevity. Um, so that's one, it seems like, uh. It's a very um generous longevity. Most of them are usually half that, but was there a. Two questions on that. One, was there another village that you saw that saw thirty percent longevity? Raise over uh seventeen years and then two, I'm wondering how current staff gets implemented. Into this, so for example, if someone has been here fifteen years. Will they get a twenty seven percent increase and then? Another three percent when they get eighteen or how did? I mean, I'm I'm trying to figure if we don't do something for implementation, a new employee will clearly get a cut out. Veteran on this. So what's the implementation strategy? And this seems to me be more of a longevity than a step.
I just a quick, what what uh what do you mean by longevity? You're you're talking.
Well, generally longevity is the longer you stay, like the city of Madison. After three years, you get two percent. After five years, you get another one percent, and this is above what everybody else. So the longer you stay and for like city of Madison at year twenty five, you could get the last one percent. So it's twelve percent over basically twenty five years. So the longer you stay, the more you get.
Okay.
Goals raises versus step raises are usually, oh, I've seen them are within the pay. Uh, grade. So in the pay grade, you would start here and maybe have three or four step raises within the pay grade. That's that's how I that in just my language, that that's why I'm asking. This to me, when you do thirty percent over eighteen years, that seems like it's much more of a. Longevity pay, so.
I think I the the genesis of where we came up with this was the the twenty twenty one study. Uh, compensation study that was put together by Bill Chang, um, had the breakdowns for what. Each band within the respective grade system was going to set for a minimum and a maximum. Um, so in our discussions with the village staff or department heads, um, trying to come up with a solution. For implementation of a set salary scale so that new employees would be able to see. Um, when they came into the village, what they might conceivably be able to envision earning with a full career with the village. Um, we tried to get a set system in place with steps. Um, the steps would front load. Newer staff to get those higher compensation percentages, as you can see. On years one through year four, the three percent set one year increments. Uh, and then the corresponding two year uh step increases. Um, for the next three years and the final three would be a three percent increase only after those third years, so. It isn't a longevity um reward necessarily, but it does. You know, show you what you would would be able to receive for a full career with the village.
So like where it says a three, like two percent for the steps. Is that three percent they would get like where I'm coming from, like a longevity, they get it no matter what, or is it based on performance? Or is this a a goal like they get the three percent for staying here, but then they also get a raise for their performance?
This would be i- it's solely for participation, successful participation within the compensation plan. Um, successful performance in the job, then with successful performance in the job. Uh, as part of the performance rating, you would be rewarded with a three percent increase on those.
It wouldn't be the three percent plus the rates or plus whatever.
Well, a three, the three percent would be the baseline. The village board would be setting on an annual basis, uh, cost of living increase to be.
I feel like it is a longevity, right?
Yeah, cuz. Oh, I see it and help me. When I read this, there seems to be three ways of increasing your pay. You have what you call in here the coal cola, which is determined every year by the board, the raises, and then you have. We'll all go along with the step raises that you you're you're calling up, and then there's. I I can't remember the term you used, but it was similar to like a merit, uh, where. If someone does something outstanding, they get extra pay. What I forgot.
Exceptional, exceptional.
Okay, exceptional bonus. So it seems like there's three there. I'm just, I'm trying to understand how it's. Implemented and how they play on each other.
Um, well, with the successful performance evaluation. The individual would be able to progress up the salary scale, adhering to the increases that baseline three percent increases that would be allotted. At those those set points in their career with the village. Uh, the cost of living increase would be an additional percent allocated by the village board or village president. In unison with the proposal, um, that would be set in addition to that on an annual basis. Um, the key component with why you'd want to have that is that not everybody's going to get a cost of living increase from your year otherwise.
Jerry, um, in conjunction with. Oh, years of service. For lack of a better term, the one year through eighteen years there. If you go to the uh sheet. In the uh appendix that. Shows uh the positions listed and. Their ranking.
Right, like.
At the end of the spreadsheet, you'll see there's a column. I leave, I call it triggers. The factor into uh going up a step. It's not just because. For your five years. Uh, you also have to like for a public works employee. There that one. They'd also need to like a like like public works too. They'd also need to be able to show. That they can confidently run or. Yeah, confidently run. Three pieces of equipment. Or uh like wastewater treatment plant operators. There be a uh operator training or licensed operator. Things of that sort. Uh, like every physician has a list of those. Things uh. Right there, and those would be. Uh, I call them the trigger points. Uh, they they would work in conjunction with. Annual satisfactory reviews. Part of the review process uh this year. Bob is gonna. Spend time with the skid steer to become confident. Well, if he doesn't at the end of the year, uh. Probably again next year. That's an example for my department. The other departments would have to speak to theirs, because each created those individuals.
I'm more like a continuing education than becoming more of a downed old ass that's too public works.
Correct.
Two parts of Iraq. And if they don't, you can withhold it.
It would be a legitimate reason to withhold it.
So how do we get everybody caught up? How do you implement this with current staff?
In all honesty, we we did not discuss that particular issue uh at our staff meetings. Well, frankly, that that is going to be a tough one to answer. We would not have had this document done in time.
No, no, I'm just throwing, it's a discussion, so I'm just throwing things out there. I'm trying to understand, and it's a big question. I wasn't there for all the discussions, so.
It's a. It's a reasonable question, Jay. I just, I don't have an answer.
Okay, that's fine. I don't want to put anybody on the spot. We're just trying to talk to Cameron and then Bobby.
Is would there be, well, I'll let him guess.
I was just gonna say, um, when I'm doing some calculations about how much does it cost to implement as presented. We took, you know, so like her, Renee, for example, she's been here way over eighteen years. That doesn't mean that she would start at step ten. Like we wouldn't give her a pay raise to get her to step ten. She would be where, um. I think we're moving her up to a grade five, so. We look for current salary. Is she making less than the starting of grade five? If she is, then she gets. Step one of grade five. Say her current salary, she, you know, puts her in the step four, then she's in stuff, you know. It's not like we're thinking Gary's automatically step ten because he's been here. And we would love to do that, but we understand that that's really not.
Well, I just want to make sure there's. Variants part of it, you know, where you don't want a new employee to have this and then people who've been here for a long time. Is is not getting some, so I'm I'm trying to figure out how that is, and that's fine. That's something we have to work on, and it's good that you mentioned. Moving with the grades, cuz I think you use, um, instead of benchmark branding, was what was the.
Brand?
Banding.
Oh, bandy, yeah. So, um, when you talk about moving Renee up, you're using the banding part of this. To justify moving her up to grade five. Is that how the system would work?
Yep, uh, so it's kind of based on. You know, their job duties, job.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They're a supervisor or not, you know, how technical their job is.
Right, I was just, I I now, I was just trying to figure out. I wanted to make sure it was clear that the branding is tied to the grades. Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, and I like would, I I guess what when I read that column of that matrix with the extra. Educational advancement. So when does the bonus part come in?
I think for Mike to babysit kids, he gets.
The bonus isn't supposed to be like an annual merit process for all employees that we're gonna be here looking for, but yeah, like it's.
Yeah.
Basically, some.
It wouldn't be like a single thing like, oh, you stop doing this and what and what kids for eight hours, so now you're gonna get a bonus. It would probably be like a pattern of behavior type of wrong, directly.
But that's what I'm trying to define what they were meaning on it. I I hear what you're saying, and the example is very clear. But that's, you know, the example up here. What about when we get to that gray area? You know, does Mike get a bonus because he's been short-staffed for the summer and he's playing the role of two court? And I guess what I'm saying is I'm trying to figure out the process for that. And 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 deciding the amount. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Mike?
I guess when I heard that, I was thinking maybe part of like our employees. For instance, and we're we can add Jordan about, right, so. Yeah, and what about especially for the that are necessarily getting one April under the wing, that's true. So then he could, he would be able to affirm that to the. Bring that to all for the board, that maybe can be given one.
Uh, okay.
Bonus you get for one time thing.
One time, yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
It's not intended to be taking over, eh, or even for that matter, being an annual process. It's supposed to be a recommendation from a staff member to a department head. Department head to the village administrator and or village administrator to the board to start that discussion.
And how do you count, wh- what 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 are the? Variables that you use to calculate that?
And maybe like, for instance, this time, and even the chief one, we had a huge saving. You know, we haven't had someone in position since February, or someone in position since February, maybe we're able to calculate the advantage from. You know, running, taking down their duties or doing something.
Okay. Is that something?
Maybe that's part of the policy aspect of the policy, you know, uh, it's not much of a.
Sure. Cody and then Kim.
Would that be something done like department heads can look at their budget and say, we're under budget because we haven't had this employee for. You know, ninety days, so we're up fifteen thousand dollars. We'd like to do a and work it out of their budget. I mean, obviously. Yeah, like you want to have it coming to the board for approval, but they get. Jerry thinks someone did something that made their water tests go well.
I don't think.
No, I understand that.
Yeah.
Okay, I got Cameron, then myself.
Which I think it's going to be impossible to kind of say, here's the equation that gets you the amount of money or the things you need to do, because like. Well, we're in a lifeguard, you know, a a bonus potentially, I don't know, is that example, and like what would what would someone from Jerry's would would be very different. So I think, you know, weaving it, I mean, and we get a a shot at it right to approve or disapprove, but so I think. You know, just disruption of department heads, I think is probably going to be the best we can do on that front.
Well, I I I guess. Well, here here's the thing, when you do. And 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 I agree with Cody about where some of the money can go, but let's take a look at the example that was in there, Jerry during the flood. Well, he probably burned most of his budget dealing with flood related things, so if someone else had money, I don't I don't think it should be tied. To that. Department to have to have money to do it. I think it's got to be, is it warranted? And where can we find the money? I agree with you. The first place we would look is within their budget. But I can see with that example that he would be wiped out with that flood. But maybe there's another spot that would be money, so we can do it. And Cameron, I agree with you that the department has probably made the call and bring it forward. But I think we have to have a policy or some guidelines, because what happens with bonuses, just like with awards. You get this where I'll come, someone from public works got it. But my officer's done this, or my parks person, you know what I mean? There's always going to be that comparison. So if we can have some guidelines, I think I agree, it's got to come from the department head, but I think. Um, we should try to, if this goes through, we should try to divide, come up with some at least guidelines.
So it's not a free for all that. Um, just a quick point, I also think when the ranges are right. Um, it helps it helps them compensate fairly. Um, Springs used to do a program that was a presidential word that was rare. Um, it was for, you know, there was probably three or four given all year. It was for a huge accomplishment, so. The supervisor department heads just recognize all the same. So I I think if it gets to be done too often, it's a lie like that. Um, I also think if people are getting the money, that sure that we do some of it's everybody, you know, it was always a big deal in front of awards and one. Uh, sure, it's.
Yeah, I guess I'm not a closer, you just have to define a little bit more exactly what we wanted to cover. All right, anybody else got?
Yeah, I just wanna appreciate the department heads and staff. Um, did everybody? All the department has got to review and see it from Ryan, like for a little bit of time and all comfortable. Yeah, to the delight, I think it's worthwhile and. I think we chose to take this ownership, but I I think it's part of what will make it more beautiful with like the users are given. Thank you.
I guess I got one more question. You talked about running some numbers. What 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 was the? Financial impact if this thing was started tomorrow?
Oh, we don't even know what starts though, right? Because that hasn't been defined. I mean, Bobby.
Well.
For example, but you know, if the department has need to talk and figure out exactly what they want to do, how to.
They would have to come up with a, uh. For quote proposal.
Yeah.
Of all to implement with the existing staff. Obviously, a new hire, after it's about that, that's easy. But the existing staff, yeah, and I'll be very honest, we we did not work on that at all.
So I guess I just.
Well, I I I'm just.
Given a number now, but then what the department has to go back and.
Understood.
Yeah.
But we're in the questions. I'm just wondering, we have our finance director here, and I'm sure she's keeping an eye on the finance.
I'm already gonna ask the same.
Yeah, I think just what she's thinking.
One thing I want to point out first is the plan is like the C I P plan. The plan is not. Doesn't cost anything. It's funded by the budget. So even if we implement this plan at budget time is when we say. If we're funding the plan or, okay, we have this much money to put towards implementation this year, and then next year we'll kick in, you know. So just letting you know that if you approve this plan, it doesn't automatically give everybody.
They would.
Point that out.
The soonest it could probably take effect would be next year after we get through next year's budget is what you're gonna saying.
We've, you know, hopefully we'd like to propose implementing part of it at least January one, twenty point four. Um, which we had.
Yeah.
We had good growth again, twenty twenty three, so I'm optimistic that, you know, our net construction number will be three to four percent. Uh, with the shared revenue, I believe in municipalities.
Correct.
I don't know how they came up with their number, but it sounds like our shared revenue actually will go up like ninety some percent instead of the minimum twenty percent. I don't know how they came up with their number, but it sounds like our shared revenue actually will go up like ninety some percent instead of the minimum twenty percent. Right, so I'm. It was like ninety nine thousand it was gonna go up, which would be huge, which is implementing this plan.
Yeah, this was the figure.
That would be eighty percent.
Ninety four percent, I and again, these.
I know, but ninety four, cause right now at twenty percent is twenty one thousand.
Right.
So if it goes to ninety, you're talking about home, over four times that, so that's eighty percent, so they're saying it's gonna go up eighty five percent, unless there's something else.
Right.
And that I'm not aware of, but the spread twenty percent.
Yeah, cause we were getting that.
Oh, yeah, same, ninety four point four percent.
So whether or not, that's actually what we're gonna get, we'll see. Plus. Um.
I would take half of it, gladly.
Anyway.
Anyway, so if we, a lot of our positions, we've um. Decided which pay rate they should be in, um, so implementing that part, um. The total impact. Would be a hundred and thirty four thousand, of which a hundred and twelve thousand is on the levy. And then obviously a little on water and a little on sewer.
What what is on levy now? Like the delta between a hundred and twelve and.
One point four, one point.
Along top of.
One point four million is our.
Right.
Well, one point two million is salary.
Yes, I'm trying to clarify, I thought the levy limit, and then we have like, you know, as much as we could get. Do that, you're saying we would surpass that, or no?
So if we were not to get a shared revenue increase, this would put us over the. But because, like I said, well.
Because of.
We have good growth and. This is promising, but I'm not, you know, counting on it until we get the piece of paper for sure, this would be instrumental.
And that gathering on is based on current employees.
Uh, it was, yep, the if we, the staff we have currently.
Yeah.
Yes, putting them into their proposed grades.
So this would be the gray part, not the. Yeah.
Yeah.
How many employees we have?
We're running on twenty five.
Okay, I don't, I don't have a question, but I feel like I'm someone who either the normal of steps and lanes, cause that's one of the things that German, and I do think. That is part of what kept me in teaching, because, you know, when you get your first job and you feel like you're not making very much money at all. Be able to see the potential was, not that it was like massive potential, but it was at least, I think that. I could maintain the level of living that I wanted, so I just really appreciate all the work that you've done. Cause as I, I'm new to all this, but as I'm learning, what people are getting paid, I was part of the process for hiring the library director. And the things that we were expecting of that person and the model. So, appreciate it, so thank you.
Good school, just want to do a shit all this thing, a lot of work.
Cause everyone was a group effort, they all met every month for a couple hours and. When over lanes reviewed on or on an information, but so I said, it's always good.
And we understand fully that there may be years and circumstances in the future that unfold, where the plan might need to be. Suspended, and that is written into this proposal as well, to give the village the flexibilities necessary in those times of need.
Yeah, I I I I I agree one to strength that, exactly from what Sarah said.
I mean, we.
I know, but when you hire someone, you say, you're gonna get these step raises at these times. You're holding a log underneath now.
You also gotta hire, I'm saying, you can earn these. This is our, this is where you can go, but if you show up late all the time and you're calling in sick on a busy day.
Well, yeah, yeah, but. Yeah, that's definitely get someone who works their butt off.
Right.
And he's expecting a three foot stunt raise, and we say, sorry, we're spending it somewhere else, I.
We had paid bruises, but then, like this year, we're getting a bigger raise, so I, you know, some of that.
And I agree with the annual raise, but I'll bet you they've never frozen step rate.
Yes, they have.
Oh, see, they, the city would never do that, they would, they would say that. Yep, uh, you're not gonna get a raise or one percent, or they do furloughs, but they don't take away seniority steps.
Then we do, we do.
We have?
We've not given races.
Well, yeah, not giving raises.
Or times a night, you're talking about.
Yeah.
So I didn't have the things. Were hired above me eventually, because we had all these freezes, but then they did a fix, so I mean, I think there's things you can do, you know.
I was just gonna say, exactly, this is a very good and a new process, and the really cool part of it is. Everybody will see the numbers, and that's an adjustment that needs to be made, those teams already started working, and they're already using the same terms, it should be something that's all. System that can keep, that matter.
So let me ask you, what are, what what do you guys want for the next step?
I I think that piece of existing employees needs to be a part.
Okay.
I I guess, to mean, what to do with existing, I guess, that I feel like that's not something that should stop us from. I don't even know what kind of motion to make, but somehow.
Well, there's no motion, there's no.
So, yes, okay, then.
We just need somebody to tell us what you want us to work on next, and it sounds like that where the existing employees would fall. Is uh.
Yeah, I have these requests for the guidelines for the bonus.
I really, I would wanna say though, like, I would like to see that sooner than later, so, I mean, your employees that have been hearing about this for six, seven, eight months. The sooner it can get to us, for us to approve it. Municipal, they're all doing this all around the state right now.
Right, but I think this should, we might as well work it right into the budget process.
I would like to see that, how they're gonna do it, current employees. If possible.
We'll do what we can, I don't know, we'll make July, but we'll shoot for July and.
Well, I don't think you need to have pressure for July. Because it's gonna be part of the twenty twenty four budget.
I think it's just, I know what he was saying, but just, you know.
Yeah, absolutely, but I I don't think they feel they have to bring it back to the board here in in three, four weeks.
Well, I I'm telling you, I don't know for sure that that's possible.
Yeah, and I I don't think you, I wouldn't worry about your stress.
I would definitely shoot for ours, for sure. And that'll play pretty close to him with the.
Right, cause it'll be September for the operating. Alrighty, anything else on that from anybody?
Just echo the venues. Yeah, also, you guys are putting this together, um, and it's, it's really, really breaks up.
All right, number five, I just would like to reiterate, you leave here and you think of something.
Yes, please.
Send it out, so we can get you the information here. Don't, don't be afraid to.
The the one other thing I would add to as a board member is, like, someone with South area was talking about in his report. It's interesting, and and it's more interesting if you get a little Hoover and check out where they're working.
All right, discussion and possible approval of proposal for four hundred and fifteen thousand general obligation. Promise there are no. Bobby?
I think it's.
Oh, yeah, we did.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, uh, discussion of possible action, village department, part-time staff, hiring slash village wage compensation. Thank you for keeping me in order. Mike, I think this is you, right?
Ah, yeah. So, uh, back in our, I think it was April meeting, uh, we had talked about coming up with an incentivized program to. Uh, provide increases to the part-time staff within our departments, um. The example and what I have uh provided for you for tonight is just for the crossbones pool. Um, Bobby was going last week, and I procrastinated, um, always done, everything else, that was one I said, I didn't have. Perfect numbers, uh, for all our part-time help, so, but I did have the numbers for you, so that is what I provided for you tonight. Um, the proposal is, uh, for any and all limited term employees, uh, work at the crossings pool. Um, we do evaluations, we've always done evaluations on staff, we do a midterm evaluation, we do an end of year evaluation. Uh, providing they have a good eval or records or goals or different things that that managers and myself may oversee. Along with, uh, no negative times, but not showing up, uh, so our policy is that once they're on the schedule. They, it's their job to find a cell for them, um, if they don't find a cell, we do expect them to be there, so making sure that no one misses any of those, that's. One of the main criteria, providing they were able to do that from the start of the season, or the start of their work time, although with the end of our full season. Uh, they would be provided a dollar at least for every hour that they work. It's gonna be optimal. Over, oh, yeah, sorry, um, overall, it will be roughly five thousand dollars, it really depends on, I see, on the. Weather and the amount of hours that we're open, um, but, you you know, try to do a five-year average for everybody that's working. Never one, never five thousand four dollars for the season, for the other staff. We usually, I think the highest amount we have is forty seven hundred, I think consideration of our employees. And that is well, it's forty eight hundred, so just.
Anybody have any questions for Mike?
Doug, um, will we be planning to make sure we want that next year and just really cover it up and market it?
Yeah, absolutely, my, my goal with this program would be to, kind of, for helping let everybody know this is what Cross Plains is doing. And we do appreciate all the work that they've done, by the way, for, um, knowing the national shore development as a general, I think this is a really good first start. And making sure that, uh, they know we appreciate that they provide what we need.
All right, so I have a motion to make a motion to accept as presented. Okay, can you say what we're saying, present, uh, accepting and presented?
Making a motion to accept the limited term employment bonus program for the Cross Plains Pool.
Thank you, I have a motion, second discussion.
Hi, Cameron, what, I mean, what we're approving here is only one time for twenty three, so I guess how do we ensure that. You know, plays out in one fourth, so we can get that marketing back that I can talk about.
Uh, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All vote say, the blue. All right, thank you, Mike, uh, discussion of possible approval of proposal for four hundred and fifteen thousand. General obligation from zero notice. Bobby?
Um, so we determined we'll need to borrow about four hundred and fifteen thousand of G O borrowing this year for projects. Um, I reached out to Greg Johnson, our contact at L R S, he said for that amount, we wouldn't do a bond. And he thought that the state trust fund loan would be our best bet, he said that in his recent experience. Local banks have been all over the board with interest rates and terms, um, but he, you know, encouraged me to reach out to. Thanks, just to put the feelers out, um, so I sent out an email to things we currently work with, and then things who have shown interest. To me that they want our business, just to, like I said, get some feelers out, um, I only got two replies back. Which were, um. Park Bank and People's Community Bank, um, and so then when I was reviewing these, um, rates with. L R S, they said that the state trust fund fund rate had actually increased. Since we originally were talking to all this, and, you know, we thought that the rate in terms that People's Community Bank was. Really good, and that, you know, if you're approval, we should move forward with finalizing that. So, if that's what is approved tonight, then I'll work with people, think to get the resolution and the more formal stuff next one.
Hey, do I have questions? Do I have a motion?
Make the motion to accept the People's Community Base, um, rate of five point two nine for a ten-year note.
I will second that. All right, and, uh, can we add the notice for four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars?
Wait, that says interest, okay, interest rate of our hundred and fifteen thousand, I was confused on that, but then, the note is for.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we have it in the minutes, how much we're borrowing at, what rates. All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Uh, aye, all vote same, so moving. All right, number five, discussion, village twenty twenty four budget planning. This is the part of the policy that we have to give, uh, staff, uh, direction on how they should. Uh, prepare their budgets, which is basically the capital, the base, and the salary and benefits. Um, the letters should go out the first week of July, the president usually writes the memo, so I will continue to do that. So what would the board like me to put in there for, uh, guidelines for staff, at least your comments? Anybody did the numbers at all? Well, I did a little bit, so I I'd like to go through it, so everybody has an understanding of somewhat. The process that I think you have to to go through, so I'm gonna write some stuff on here, just so it's easier, you don't have to write a lot of notes. So, as I mentioned last time, there's two things we should probably be looking at, one is the levy limit, that's one of the boundaries. The other boundary, I believe we should be looking at is the amount of money will be increased taxes on the home. So what I always do is I look for, I do levy limit first, cause that kinda gives you the pool. So, and this is from the stuff we had before, the first thing I looked at is what was our two thousand three buffer? How much do we have, will we under the levy limit for, uh, the twenty twenty three budget, I. From what we have is eighty eight thousand four oh one. And new construction, I did a two point five, if it's higher than that, that's great, but a new construction at two point five. Gives us the next, uh, gives us sixty thousand. Six hundred, and that's with the two point five percent increase. And then I looked at share revenue, now obviously, I didn't have that chart, I took twenty percent. Of what we received in shared revenue last year, which was a hundred and five thousand, basically, so I took twenty percent. And that gives us twenty one thousand. All right, so that's, that's what I took for, as I see as positives, that money that we can spend. Without getting the levy limit, and these are, again, general, right? If it's, if this goes up to three percent, it goes up, if this goes up to ninety four percent. Hallelujah, that's, that's great, but this is what I did, and then what I did is I looked at, well, what have we already approved? In twenty twenty three that goes against us, and the big one was our our mowing. Now, hopefully, because it's real broad, we, they aren't doing it, but I did base it on twenty eight mowers, that's a minus. Of seventy six thousand seven ninety seven, if we did twenty eight mowings this year. We're spending almost seventy seven thousand more than we did last year, last year, we spent, um. Uh, thirty five thousand two hundred, this year I'm calculating at twenty eight mowers at the four thousand. That they're charging us is a hundred and twelve thousand, the difference from what we budgeted. So what we're gonna end up paying this year, that we'll have to pay is, uh, the seventy six thousand. We've already approved a two-year contract with police, so their raise. Okay, add seven, another minus seven thousand. Three fifty four. So that is that, now you just approved four hundred and fifteen thousand at five point two nine percent. And that will not go to the levy, but the new borrowing certainly goes against. Go to the levy, but the new borrowing certainly goes against. Um. The tax increase and that four fifteen is fifty three thousand. Five thirty two. Uh that'll be added to our debt service. From the borrowing.
Looking at it, no, our debt service is gonna go down by a thousand dollars here for the chart from this year to next year.
Yeah, I'm gonna say we knock off some.
Well.
So the that.
I didn't have that when I, I didn't have that right there, so I didn't also have what the cost of the borrowing. From twenty twenty two applied to it. Right. So you're saying overall this gets chunked out then?
Yeah, because, yeah, it's gonna be a decrease of a thousand dollars under.
So then that goes up here.
It's something one twenty two.
Page twenty one, one twenty two. That's what I've got on the screen.
Uh go off.
Page one eighteen.
Twenty eighteen, okay.
Yeah, they in the L R S report, right?
That one. See there how it goes twenty twenty.
Which column we existed?
Right in the middle there, like Brian's school or a little, it's right there where it says.
Oh, right here.
Yeah, we're going down by nine hundred thirty one because we're paying nine ninety three, we're paying.
But that did that include the borrowing already here?
That includes this.
It does the fourth, okay, all right, well then we're good. So then that's good, we don't have to worry about that one. All right, so then the other one that um I had some difficulty, and this is the serious one, depending, get rid of that then. Is the. E R P. So we ended up getting ninety thousand in twenty three. We got zero in twenty two, zero in twenty one, and sixty one thousand. And twenty, I'm sorry, what's E R P? That's that expenditure restraint program. So if we 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 figure we're gonna get some in twenty twenty four. The question is, we don't know how much. So the question is, since we use this for operating in twenty twenty three. Are we gonna maintain that we're gonna get ninety, or do we need to do some type of adjustment? And that again is. Flip the coin on. What what's gonna happen? I don't think they put any more money in, and that is a pot of money divided by how many villages. Meet the requirements of the program, they divide it out, and that's how it it comes out. But if we wanna keep this, and I'm fine with this, at ninety, then we have to make sure. That we try to maintain that we stay in that program past twenty twenty four. Because we're now kind of working this in as a yearly revenue. Go ahead, Bobby.
Yes, but no, what we decided to do with this money is fund our retirements payouts.
But that goes five years.
Right. So we know we got this for this year and we'll get it next year, so we're hoping that.
Yeah, but but I think it's the chart that you got for retirement goes out five years, and it's still a fairly high number.
Right, I'm just saying, like, if you.
Yeah.
But if I have all my, the five years, is it more or less, say we get ninety again, that's right. But say we get a hundred and eighty over two years, does that cover the five years of cash?
I know. It weren't we, I'd have to pull it up, but we could, yeah, but anyway, I just wanna throw you that that's out there. So when you look at this. If these numbers hold, you're basically looking at a hundred and sixty eight thousand, and we've already spent eighty three of that. Right? So our pot of money is right there. So then when you look at, when we talk about things, the next thing I did is looked at, okay. Every one percent increase in salary is twelve thousand dollars. Every increase, one percent increase in base budget is fourteen thousand eight hundred. So let's say we go, to me, we have, I think we're somewhat obligated since we gave police a three percent in twenty twenty four. That I think other employees should probably get three percent, so that's thirty six thousand five hundred of that eighty thousand. You look puzzled.
Yes.
Okay.
Um mostly just because we're also talking like dragging both the the other compensation then.
Ignore that for now.
I know, I yeah, I'm I'm following you too, because I'm organizing with that, keep going.
Okay. So um we're looking, so now we're down just to basically forty four thousand less. It's 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 um. Um we get the the ninety four thousand from state aid.
I'm sorry, the forty four thousand is like what?
Would it would be what we have left.
To spend.
To spend. Or not to spend in twenty twenty three, but to budget for in twenty twenty four. That's what we can increase the amount that we spend. Is everybody kind of following that? So if you do, let's say a two percent increase on base budget, that's a twenty, that's twenty nine thousand five hundred. So now, when you get down to it, if we do those of three percent, two percent, we're at about eleven percent, I mean eleven thousand dollars to play with. Okay, wait, now you've lost me. So we're at, if you look at these, we're at eighty thousand, right? Let's say we have eighty thousand to play with. This is what we think we're gonna increase, right? And this is what we've already spent this year that goes against next year's operating.
Why does this that go against next year's?
Because we don't want to fall, right? Right now.
But I mean, one thing, when that came up specifically, was Jerry was like, this needs to go to the finance committee and should we hire a physician to buy a mower? And maybe looking at that number, I'm pretty sure a position in mower would be a lot cheaper, so like.
We're talking about that, that's that's, oh, no, it's not, it's fat and fine, that's right.
But then I'm confused how you assume that's gonna be at next year's. Question, I guess.
The thing, Cameron, we may not pay a contractor. But we've already done the numbers, and I wanna just throw out, to start a mowing program is gonna be about. I wanna say it's between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and twenty four, it was seventy eight thousand just for labor. And the two mowers are, when I priced them out, they were twelve thousand eight hundred a piece, and we have, you'll see that, but. The bottom line is, there's no way we can get rid of this number. We're gonna be paying somebody, either staff. Our staff or contract.
We're gonna conservative.
What's that?
Being conservative, thinking we're on the hook for eighty K.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Right.
I've only got a twenty two inch push mower, so.
So so we had eight thousand, so then I said, if we wanna give, we are, we're giving the police officers that are under contract. A three percent raise next year. So if we do for staff, that's thirty six five hundred. Right? Let's just have that as a basic start, right? So now we're at forty three thousand five hundred. Right? Okay. So if we wanna, we gotta give some direction on how much to increase our base budget. If you do two percent, it's twenty nine thousand five hundred. Right? So that's basically fourteen thousand. We have left, unless we can increase revenue, find savings somewhere else, correct? Some of these numbers go up.
And that's until we hit the levy.
Correct.
That's the whole goal is say that.
Right, right, that's goal number one.
Right, that's.
Now, the the next thing we would do is have to figure out with all of this, what that will look like for a tax increase. Here, we're just dealing with the ceiling.
Okay, so uh. Write down what that includes, you know, you said three percent.
Yeah, this is, this is three percent for non, non police union wages. This is a two percent increase in base budget.
This is pretty close.
Well, it does.
But don't spin another guy.
Yeah, but.
Nothing will come out.
There's, I mean, like. I'm not saying we're gonna do this right now, but I I don't like that we always talk about. Look, we have this levy limit, there's nothing you can do, throw our hands up, like, you know, municipalities all over Wisconsin are going to referendum to increase that. We need to offer our staff a living wage. I mean, if our police officers can't afford an apartment. That's a problem, and so I would rather be talking about this problem, not that we have a line. And we can't pass it, and there's nothing we can do about that.
I don't, I don't think anybody says there's nothing we can do about it.
Okay.
But it is unrealistic to think that we can get a referendum up and running by November that would. Solve the twenty twenty four budget process. So while that is certainly an option, it is not an option for the twenty twenty four budget.
I agree with that.
I like a little bit of what you're saying, a little bit of what you're saying, find like the middle ground there, like.
Well, there isn't really middle ground, I mean, without some numbers going up, I mean.
But isn't there a good chance that that one number will go up for twenty percent?
Yeah.
I hope so, yeah.
I feel like if you bank on that and then you get an extra hundred.
I'm just going, if my rep one was sent out and you hear the news. They're guaranteeing a twenty percent increase in every village, every village's uh share of revenue. So our share of revenue is a hundred and five, twenty percent of that, I mean, it's twenty one thousand. Now, I don't know, there must be a greater formula in all of this to get it, because that's showing ninety four point four percent. I've never, on the news or the governor, you would think if they would, would be giving people ninety four point, or politicians would be. Dancing in the streets saying, hey, we're giving villages ninety four point four if you're under five, whatever it is that they did that, so. But that's a a reliable organization, so I'm not gonna tell them, I just don't know how that is.
I guess then, I think any extra money we have, I think, to be put into staff. I I I don't know, I think three percent raises.
It's it it's, I mean, it's not gotten it, yeah, police officer, we're doing something wrong. And I understand referendum by November, well, actually, I don't understand that, actually, what is the process?
A full process of education, of getting the wording right, and then staff has to prepare a lot of work, all right, so you're giving staff that's overworked.
Well, not only that, what are you gonna ask for? How much you gonna ask for, Bobby?
I don't know that, but I mean, then we should have been having this discussion six months ago, I mean, you know.
No, I wasn't either.
But I don't really care if you two would support it.
It's really easy to throw that out. I'm I'm telling you, to do a referendum, you're talking, you should be preparing probably a year to you, two years ahead of time. Because there's a lot of calculations you've gotta do, you know, to say it, I mean, uh put that out.
Historically, they've been very divisive too.
That's what I was just gonna say, most municipalities recently that have done it have actually gone out and contracted someone to get it.
So then, so like when Middleton does a rough run the future, they're like already starting a process the year before.
It's only done once. It's the school district that does it a little bit more on uh more, and that's what they really, it's really been just recently that. Municipalities have, school districts have done it uh quite a bit. Because they their income is a lot more flexible, it flexes because of the amount of money that the state decides to give to students. Yeah, I mean, for student, you know, again, now they're gonna see a big jump because they're going from, I think. Almost like two seventy up to three fifty or something, it's a huge jump, so they get this huge, you know, inflow and then. When they lower it, then they get into a troubled areas, and a lot of them are school. You know, are for building.
Oh, right, right. Okay, I didn't know Middleton was the first time they did.
That's right, yeah, I also.
Curating thing and how they handled them. The city did one?
Yeah, the city did one. Yeah, it passed, but they laid it out, you know, and you're gonna get two police officers, you're gonna get a public works person, you're gonna have this. You're gonna, well, I think the raises came from that too, didn't they? Didn't they have the raises as part of that? Yeah, so they laid it all out and they came up with uh five hundred fifty thousand, I think it was, and that's what they did the referendum on, and.
I think we should go through that process, we should go through it after we get the numbers, you know, just because this year in particular is weird with the. Potential ninety percent increase in that. Um and I think we should, we should, we should really do that exercise, we should get the numbers for, you know, the funding or you get. We should, you know, look at whatever staff compensation plan we approve, and then we should really look and say, what are their positions? We wanna add. Do we want a full time police, you know, department here? Do we want some other things? And then we should look at, okay, here's our kind of dream state with this much staff, with, you know, with this payment plan, compensation plan. We should look at the delta between, you know, what would it cost to have the dream state compared to what we're getting in our budget? And then if, you know, there's, we should talk about our friend.
I I don't have a problem with that at all, but someone's gotta sit down and do it, that's the only thing, and. Now's probably not the time to talk about a referendum when we're starting the budget process for twenty twenty.
I would, I would like to talk about it after we know what numbers we're getting for twenty three. And after we approve the compensation plan, right, because then those are, then the last piece of into the puzzle, just like, and what position, staff positions are we missing? I think with those three things, you could figure out how much you're off.
And we did have that discussion last year about the the order, which is still listed behind us, and we had that discussion in. Twenty twenty four, I think when we were talking in general terms, was looked at as a police officer being added to the village. Um by ranking.
Yeah, I understand that, but you know. I I we need more than one to get your full time police force, I know that, so then, is that something we, the board, and the citizens want? And if so, we should talk about how to get there, you know, like, yeah.
Don't have.
You know, I mean.
No problem, it's just that we gotta take this, and if you want something, then you gotta look into the future, it's not a solution that's a very quick one to turn around on. All right, so go ahead, Bobby.
I just wanted to let you know, I calculated uh based on our preliminary assessment. Uh information, if we assume a three percent increase in equalized value. We can increase the levy four percent without a tax rate increase, that's like, tax rate would be flat, so it's like a hundred thirty five. Increase the levy index would be flat.
And so, and the the numbers you had up there was two and three percent, or not, three and three.
He's probably well something.
I know, I know, but I'm trying to confirm this to then bridge the two.
Uh well, we did, they're different, I I she, what did you calculate, what percent were you after that number?
Three percent.
Three percent, I did two point five, so we're a half percent difference.
So I'm just saying, like, if we, they should get three percent. Broke, we can raise the levy four percent, tax rate will stay the same.
Okay, but what does that equate to a staff? Opposing risk, because I think, I don't know, I agree completely with Sarah, that three percent is too low.
Well.
Nothing, I'm just saying, like, one of the questions did ask is like, you know, we need to keep in mind tax rate, like, we we want our tax rates to jump. We can increase a hundred thirty five thousand and not affect the rate.
But but again, out of that hundred thirty three, the stuff you gotta lap off the seventy six and the seven, I. You know what I mean? You you still gotta play in the costs that we've already approved this year and carry over until next year.
Yep, and so I guess, what was the number that was remaining up there? And we had fourteen thousand. Right, and that was based off, you said, two, two and a half percent?
Three, uh yes.
Two and a half percent salary salary raise, okay.
No, 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 three percent salary, two percent base budget.
We just need to start it first, because we have to give you guys a first draft in two months, so.
So so, yeah, remember the process, we give them direction.
Yep.
And then what they do is they follow that, and then if they need more, then it would be put on a supplement. And then that is added to it, so we don't have to go through line by line by line. So we talk in general, so that's the process. So the bud, so this budget is just a starting point.
Can a supplement be a a a person resource or a raise?
Yeah, it can be anything. Yeah, it can be anything, anything that they can cover by the direction that they will give. All right? Okay, so uh we don't need to take any action on this.
Oh, uh you said you were gonna break something out.
I will. I will.
Uh, so I guess, what are you writing out?
I don't know yet. I'll have, I'll talk with Bobby a little bit more on the numbers and then I'll come up with something, but again, it's just a base to start with. But I don't. It doesn't appear that people ran numbers, so I don't know the value. If you say staff should get six percent and I put it in a memo that staff can have six percent raise. And then we can't do it because we're over the levy limit. I'm not gonna do that. I, I, I'm very conservative on that because there's the avenue that they can submit a supplement for three percent for everybody and then we can discuss it. But they need something to start their budget process. And I don't like where you give someone this thing, they do all that work, now you say, oh no, you gotta cut another two percent from it, so go back and cut. So it's better to give a base and then let them add on a supplement to what's additional and then we can talk about it.
Alright, and then, so did you say we gave the police, uh, to the union a four percent?
It was three percent at the beginning of twenty twenty four and one percent, uh, twelve thirty one. So I mean, that just goes right into twenty twenty five. You know.
Yeah.
They wanted it, so I'm not gonna fight it with her. Alright, anybody else wanna give me any input? Alrighty, let's go to number six, discussion and possible action, community development authority. Many membership. So you see, I aired earlier on. Of course, the state likes to roll things all around, so I thought it was like the plan commission where it was three. Um, board members, four from the community, everybody's three years. It turns out that it's. Two board members, five, um. Uh, five citizens and they are four-year terms or. The end of the term of the elected official and then the first year you gotta space them out to. Two of them, one year, one two-year, one three-year and one four-year. So that's all laid out, uh, for you. On that, so that. Any questions on that? Yes, I will.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second, alright, I have a motion and second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all the polls say, so moved. Alright, number seven, discussion and possible actions, memorandum of understanding between village of Cross Plains and. Cross Plains Police Association, Wisconsin Professional Police Associate, Police Sergeant Position. That's an awful.
Want just a little update?
Sure.
So, uh, the last meeting, you guys asked me to, uh, check into a couple of things. One. Is can we actually create the sergeant position? Um, I work with the union and yes, we can. There is nothing. Um, dating back into the nineties that, um, that a position can be created because there was been some issues. There was. A demotion at some point, uh, but this is before we were even unionized. Which I confirmed also speaking with Scott, he was here during that time. Um, and so, so we're good that way. The, the union took a look at it, they took a couple of weeks to kind of just move things over and. Um, it was ratified unanimously by the, by the membership. So this is the product of that. Been signed by everybody and, um, you can see the outline of, it still maintains that the. The sergeant would fall into line with regards to seniority. The senior officers would get overtime before the sergeant unless it, it has something to do with his. Role as a detective where he would be the one having to come out. But just general overtime would go up, it, because now he's in the union, so that's why the union works is seniority gets. First dibs on overtime. It's not an issue for my department because most of the time I'm struggling to get them to do overtime, so.
Alright, any questions? Otherwise, can I have the motion, please?
I will, uh, make the motion that we accept the, uh. That helpful thing that I now.
Memorandum of understanding?
Thank you, memorandum of understanding, um, uh, for the position with the Cross Plains Police Department. I'll sorry.
I have a motion and second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all the polls say, so move. Discussion and possible action regarding the approval renewal. Of the following license classes for the period of July first, twenty twenty three through June thirtieth of twenty twenty four. Uh, we're gonna have to do these separately. So we'll take them by the letter. Do I have a motion? Uh, for the cigarette and tobacco products retail license.
Motion to approve the cigarette and tobacco products retail license.
Second. Have a motion in the second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All the polls say, the move. A B, uh, any emotion for class A intoxicating liquor and class A fermented malt beverages renewal of licenses?
Motion to approve the class A intoxicating liquor and class A fermented malt beverages.
Do I have, uh, okay, I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all the polls say. Motion for approval of the class B intoxicating liquor and class B fermented malt beverages.
Motion to approve the class B intoxicating liquor and class B.
I'll sorry. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanna point out for. Uh, yep, um, so nineteen oh nine has sold. So their liquor license, they're only gonna have for like eleven days essentially, then they'll give it up and give it to the new owners, um. Think I might just have to do an agent change. I don't think that's anything, I'll have to come back to the board to reapprove that, but, um.
Uh, it's more an agent change, isn't it? It's owner, it's ownership of it, unless she's paying it out to the license herself.
So I originally had told Katie she needed to have the new owners submit.
Yeah.
An application also. And that didn't come in, so then I was thinking because they're still gonna be. Case on the building, but they're selling the.
I think we should check on that. I, I, I really don't know. I think, I thought the license went to the business, not the front. But then I could be wrong.
Right, because you're selling the business. I don't know, yeah, like I said.
It's, it's definitely not, it's more than a change of agent because you're changing ownership. Agent is if you just change, an agent.
Well, then we might have an issue that, why?
But we, but we would have, I mean, we would have to approve this for the next eleven days.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah. No, it's good. The question, what you're saying is what's that, what happens after the eleven days?
Well, we're gonna have to go through this, the liquor store also. Um. Yes.
Yes.
I don't know that we know for sure that they're gonna.
Yeah, we, we, we're gonna have to check on illegality of that. I, I think it's more than an agent change, but I could be wrong. Let me sell something, I think it's.
And then just to point out too, that the class B liquors are ones that were called what, fora? So, um, this is. We have seven licenses, there's seven applicants. So a new bar or restaurant, they come in, they would have to pay the ten thousand dollar, here's their.
That would any other places?
No, we've always, since I've been here, been right at the seven.
And that has to do with the size or something, right? We used to have twelve bars a night.
So, I don't get it. It was however many we had, but they didn't implement it.
Yeah.
But this, keeping that in mind too.
And somehow Madison does some type of rebating. So the people pay the ten thousand and then they rebate it back somehow, I don't know. Some legal thing that, I just remember when I was on the O F O review board, I thought it was weird. Alrighty, uh, we did both, did we?
No.
Yep, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all the polls say, the move. Alright, class C wine and class B, uh, fermented malt, uh, malt beverages, uh, approval.
I'll make a motion to accept the class B wine and class B fermented, fermented malt beverages.
I'll second. Alright, I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the polls say. E, uh, approval of the operators bartenders licenses. Would, would approve the operator bartender place. I'll second. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Okay, Bobby?
I just wanna point out that last week when I was on vacation, we got a whole bunch of more applications, so next month will be more operator licenses to approve, but I think.
Okay, very good, thank you. Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all the polls say, the move. Alright. Discussion and possible action regarding village driveway ordinance amendments. Brian?
Alright, I'm not gonna take too much time on this. Um, the memo sort of summarizes where we're at. Uh, the village staff had identified that there were some inconsistencies within our zoning code related to the, um. Uh, additions of, uh, new driveway parking pads or, or placement of driveway additions. Um, long story short, consulted with our village, um, planner and, uh, had modified language brought before the village plan commission. Of which they recommended, um, approval of, uh, which is included here tonight. Um, hopefully the passage of that will take care of any inconsistencies. The main inconsistency was that by most accounts, no village, um, or cities. Traditionally allow for parking pads directly to be added directly in front of a home. And we sort of had a inconsistent diagram that sort of implied that that was allowable. Um, even though the language in the ordinance, um, implied that it was not. Um, so this sort of clarifies that and, and takes away any future confusion.
Alright, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion, uh, to accept the post updates to section B border.
Alright, go ahead, second. Alright, I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the polls say, the move. Number ten, discussion village short-term rental policy.
Okay, um, short-term rental policy, this was another item that had come up. Um, we received a few phone calls here in the village, um, related to the licensing process or registration process to pursue short-term rental. Um, properties, um, on homes within the village. Um, we basically in, in researching that, found that we did not have any current language, uh, within our village. Uh, ordinances pertaining to that. Um, in consultation with our village planner and looking back at some of our prior memos and, and conversations within the plan commission. Um, the topic came up back in twenty twenty one, um, but no formal action was ever taken. Um, so during our most recent plan commission meeting, um, our village planner put forward some standard language that's utilized in other communities. That they've worked with on this topic. Um, it was discussed, there were some slight modifications made to that based on the plan commission's. Um, recommendations. It is here before you tonight to take a look at and see if there's any other suggested. Language inclusions or any other suggested changes you'd like to see them incorporate. Before we bring it back for a public hearing at the, uh, plan commission, uh, in July.
I have a question, this concerning its uses, like, does it say it can only be operated for half a year?
Rental period shall not be more than a hundred days in calendar year.
Consecutive days, um, I believe that is. Yeah.
Okay, it doesn't say consecutive though.
No, it wouldn't be, no, I think you can do it, you just have, there's a limit.
Yeah.
Says which must be consecutive.
Yeah, it does say.
Correct. The point is, it doesn't, you don't want it to have, to end up being a situation where it's like a year-long rental arrangement, otherwise it wouldn't qualify as a short-term. So it's not a typical lease that someone's approaching a private homeowner and stating, I'd like to rent your home for a year. These are supposed to be short-term in duration, um. And there are licensing requirements, there's, um, uh, minimum parking requirements, things of that nature. Ordinances pertaining to noise violations, um, in order to qualify as an S T R property.
So my question is, where? How would these be used? What's the point of approving this? Okay.
You wanna have someone portioned?
No, I, I understand that, so, yeah. Alright, so, right, I guess, so yeah, I understand like if it's an Airbnb with a hundred and eighty days. Challenge seed, which must be consecutive, then somebody can only rent outs the place for six months of the year. No, it says one for, says the minimum is two days. The minimum rental period shall be two days by any one party, the maximum rental period shall be all of them. No, but I think. Yeah, but it says the total number of date of operation in any county or shop, it's eight hundred eighty days, which must be consecutive. They, they have to lap off. It's saying, it's basically saying, it's like a very two different ways, that's not. I'm reading.
Are you reading pain? A does say shall not exceed a hundred eighty days, which, yeah, should not say, which must be consecutively.
So then.
We, do they mean that it shouldn't exceed one hundred eighty days consecutively?
I think that's what I believe it's intended to say.
Well, that's what it's saying, the maximum rent there should be more than a hundred eighty, it's saying somebody can only rent it out for six months. But the top line is saying the place can only operate for a hundred eighty days, second. Yeah, I think that's what it's.
Okay. Yeah.
So it means these things, sort of, the idea that these are able to operate year-round.
Correct.
But the two-day minimum, hundred eighty day tax.
Max.
Begin the whole year. Right, that was where I was like, wow, we're only, we're only gonna do six months operation, but that was sort of. Uh, strange.
And, and just so everybody knows what's following up from finances, we'll be looking at a room tax. So these would then fall under a room tax potentially.
Right, absolutely. Um, also, the other thing that I read or caught was the same as on. The third page where it says it's permitted in all zoning districts, it's a contradiction at the top, which is the first line. It's permitted by right in all zoning districts, then you see the land use circuit rental, so it'll be located, except for use to residential land, you said the finance. Sixteen four fifty five doesn't allow residential use inside of. Business parkway industrial, like these pieces need to be reviewed, same thing with conservation and the parks are. The piece can't go across the whole thing. The first two lines.
Here's your two pages down.
I'm two pages down, but it says it down the word, it's the top two, it's under one and two, it's a permitted by right in all zoning districts. Then you see you can only do it in residential places, then we don't allow residential in all zoning districts.
Yeah, but I, I don't, if I remember right from our planner, there's a state law that says it could be. You can have these in all, uh, zoning districts. Isn't that what he said?
I believe that.
There, there's something where you can't limit where these are.
Well then, how are we limiting them to the only using residential land use?
I don't know. Yeah, no, I hear what you're saying, but I thought he said it at least a couple of times at a plan meeting, that state statute says you can't limit these.
So that means that somebody wanted to print out somewhere in a business park, they can?
Let me ask him how that, or if. Let me ask him how that, or if it's a specific residential only code and I'll get the clarification.
That means like on Bourbon Road.
I don't think, cause this also, I think we're looking, it also covers hotels and hotels. So those would be in commercial area, there's a specific line in here that interests that though. That isn't, it's different, there's something in here that I've read it.
To allow some of the businesses to have Airbnb within.
Well, like in that Main Street makes use a lot for residential, so you would allow have above a business, but it doesn't like you know like a P I, things P I could rent out as Airbnb, if you have an all permitted zoning districts. They could establish.
Yeah, but if they have a resident.
But it's not, but it's not, that means that they could actually run out their back or toward as an Airbnb.
No, no, I I'm questioning the residential part, cause I thought um he was very clear that state statute says you cannot restrict these in any district.
Yeah.
That's what I, that's the wording, now maybe left out residential district, but but I thought it was, it was across the board.
Then, okay, then I don't know, well then maybe maybe we have to say that we're allowing them on zoning districts, but then we're allowed to limit that to just residential areas. See, I don't know, that's that's what.
We'll have to clear that.
Yeah, let me.
Same you say. I thought when he spoke, he said you gotta be careful because state law allows these, you can't restrict them.
Now, what you were talking about is similar facilities are these fall within vendor breakfast vacation, rather than home and indoor commercial lodging language type, that's in there also, he talks about.
Yeah.
Because of their commercial area, yeah, I mean, it's, you mentioned it in there.
Yeah. Hmm, we'll just have to get that cleared up, I think this was a copy from Pittsburgh or something.
I think that was one of the most recent ones.
Yeah, this is a, a copy, it's not designed for us.
Okay, well, it was.
Yeah, no, no, you you, that's a valid point, I like I say, I thought it was supposed to be P and cross, but then we should have the wording match up to what it's.
Well, yeah, I mean, if we're, I mean. I, that's why I don't know if we're trying to limit it, so only revolution uses, but.
Well, the whole, from from plan, if I understood, we can't limit where they are, but you can limit how they're used. And the rules that they have to follow in doing, you can't say they can't have it, but if you have it, you have to follow blah, 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 blah. That was my general understanding from our planner.
So um one thing that friend of mine is going through this where they um there, the area where they have an Airbnb, they're not allowing them to have flyers outside. Because the neighbors were concerned about that, and I didn't say anything about that, I thought that might be something.
Well, that you should, the, coming from Madison, if you wanna see one that's restrictive, look at Madison.
Yeah.
It's very, because we were.
Well, listen from the devil, like in the, in.
Yeah. This is, we, they, the plan commission chose not to have one as restrictive. And the thought was that, you know, things start happening, then we add to it.
Okay.
Yeah, just look into it, I mean, with what you were saying, Jay, we can permit them on all zoning districts, but we can limit them to be residential, we just don't permit residential in minds. So then they can't have it in a mineral extraction, though, we don't allow house.
No, you didn't make, I hear what you're saying, yeah, absolutely.
Presidential district, but we just don't allow residents in specific zoning districts, therefore they are in residential areas, even though it's permitted on zoning.
Huh, that's a very interesting question.
I think that's, I think that's what you're saying, I'm lying. It's mineral extraction is ME, it's cause it's the the.
Yeah, no, no, he's right, we'll have to just get clarification. Does that?
And the hundred eighty day thing.
Yeah. I think we all know what it's supposed to is just on how you interpret it, but you write the language, if this is from Pittsburgh, you can go run them up there. Don't recall it, it's from somewhere else, maybe Cambridge or something, it, we didn't reinvent the wheel. He just, he brought Madison and one others and they chose this one, Madison is extreme, it's like six pages long, very detailed. Cause we were having problems in.
Well, as I say, I have a feeling as we get more, you know, these things will pop up.
Yeah, I agree. Alright, um so we got that, any other comments? Well, obviously, uh what we'll probably do is make those clarifications.
Yep.
And then we'll do the public hearing and then bring it back.
Sure.
Alright. Uh next one, discussion and possible action regarding zoning code amendments to add parks and conservancy. That's repeal and create section eighty four point five four of the village across plain zoning code of ordinances. Michael, did we get them all? Uh do I have a motion then?
I'll make a motion to approve section eighty four point five four of the village across planes, planning zoning code of ordinances.
Alright, do I have a second?
One second.
Alright, I have a motion. Um and a second, all in favor say aye, all of all same, so. Alright, discussion and possible action, uh village energy audit slash benchmarking program. Is this yours, Brian, or Michael's, or whose is it?
Oh, came out of sustainability.
Okay.
Do it, um. About, well, Brian works with the fellow from Focus on Energy more than I did, he gave him the tour of the village. And showed him around different places and included in the package is what's his report on various things he found where energy could possibly be stayed in, there's analysis, many things for the water, there's a wastewater treatment plant where things run uh full time twenty four seven, or you could shut off different banks, it's just you then have to balance um installing it, additional sensors and such, which is cost overhead to allow things to be turned off when needed and not. And so you end up with, and it kind of goes into it, but you get into multi-year up to ten year return on investments on some of these things. Um there's other things throughout the village, things on the library in terms of their uh relation system, repeating, et cetera, et cetera, it's just kinda it was just the focus on energy report, so sustainability, most likely look at some of these additional, I'm not really too sure what we were gonna do quite yet. Um then there was a school government benchmarking offer that came out of Focus on Energy and it allowed you to benchmark your energy use. And you have to enter in your energy requirements and do a little website, then doing so, they will actually pay you to do that for the time. And uh the sustainability committee actually applied for this because we we didn't have enough time to bring it to the board for approval because it was gonna be after the due date and we kind of fell, fell under the grant policy of the village because we were getting paid to do it, but it was gonna cost the village anything. So I do not know the results of this sort of thing then.
Haven't heard anything back yet, um and as Michael stated, the energy audit itself, the list and and kind of what the sustainability committee was hoping to to see tonight was maybe uh vill- village board support for us um as a committee looking over that energy audit and identifying some of the higher recommendations for energy savings, cost savings for the village and see if they can start doing a little bit of additional research. Um identifying a priority order list um and or placing or agreeing upon the priority order list that Michael provided, the summary sheet. And then start targeting on a ongoing basis, maybe one item per budget cycle for identifying and and making those suggested uh updates uh to energy improvements and saving the village money down the road.
Yeah, I think, does that require a motion to say, maybe you can let it do this?
There's already something that you asked and Andy was still here, but.
There was a reservation. Yeah. Yeah, correct.
Maybe because the the committee wanted this just to be brought to the board and let you know if you wanna make a motion to say we can do this, that's fine, I mean, anything, any money that's spent will obviously be brought back to the board.
Right, I I would love to see, yeah, if you guys wanna do a little deeper dive on this and come back with a, you know, project day approximate costs, approximate savings over ten years or whatever, B C and N R C, guys, obviously do these three here because the it doesn't cost that much money or the savings are high, but these other ones are more expensive, so maybe in a future budget, I mean, I think that's perfect. See things like that, make a decision off of it.
So, I don't know, if everyone's fine, we don't need a motion, we'll just keep.
I mean, unless I'm wrong, Jay.
No, no, you're right.
It's kind of great, but bringing this to you, letting you know what we have and letting you know what's going on, we'll let you know in a future meeting. That's about the benchmarking application.
And and I guess I don't wanna minimize this, I I I I read through this whole report, I thought it was really great, I thought it was, I thought it was actually that we, you know you know, had this valuation done and yeah, taking it the next step and be like, you know, here the approximate costs and savings to this thing, that would be a great thing to make decisions.
Yeah, they would be, so I I read a lot of it in the review, as things fail, upgrade them to better system. What it is, it's kind of like something's working, right, we gotta rip it out and spend a bunch and fail them three years.
Looks like there was some low hanging fruit though, like fixing the the ceiling or whatever and you wanted to maintain this building, it's like. You know, they, you're also talking about like the bulk LED light, you know, replacement or whatever, so what you guys could say would cost you X you know, to do this, but you save Y, you know, that would be great.
Right.
Yeah, I agree, no, I saw this as an information piece and I think the the committee should take the next step and look it over and see what they wanna push forward, right, come up with a proposal.
Alright, thank you.
Yep. Alright, discussion and possible action, village municipal property planning reviews. Cameron?
Um, this was my parents request from the last meeting. Um, I guess. I'm maybe fifteen, I don't know, maybe I'm the crazy one. You know, we got these kind of projects floating around, um Jay sent out, I don't know if he sent it out to everyone, but he sent out a wonderful timeline of like kind of decisions we've made on the 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 village hall police station. And I think most of my concern is just with um the the bottom two things of what we've done here, and now we've added the third one here, uh which is, you know, that we did tonight, approving the the C D A uh people, but like those last two decisions and the one today have been the only ones in the context of having a wellness center kind of like on the radar, um you know, that wasn't presented to the board, that was the first time I had heard of it. And that was in, you know, November twenty second, twenty two, so you know, looking at the priority buildings over there, community center, which would be the wellness center is second from the bottom. A donation is coming in and that's really great, it's an investment, and that means obviously, I mean, I'm not saying we should not do it. I'm just saying we should do the planning a little more carefully because you know, our first priority was village hall police station, so we know, you know, we're we're trying to position, and the second priority was the pool, we're trying to position that. I would hate for one of our top two priority or even third or fourth priority buildings be compromised in some way because um the community center, you know, got in somewhere. Um did that make sense or?
Well, well, I I I understand what you're saying, what I need to know is what you, when you say compromise, that's the part I'm not understanding.
Uh I'm sorry, can I use the wrong word, uh and price, no. Room, like it.
Well, explain, that's the part I'm trying to understand.
So pool is our second priority, cause. For the village.
Mm-hmm.
We wanna go place the pool now at three thousand Evergreen Parkway.
Potentially.
The whatever, it doesn't matter, that's what, you know, we we get all the way down the road, we find the money and get the planning, oh shoot, we can't put it there because of you know, we put the wellness center there or whatever.
Where are you going?
Where am I going, yeah, I know, I.
I mean, I get it, pools up here, but this is privately funded. And so it's not like taking village staff, it's not gonna put the village hall behind.
Not behind, but if you all of a sudden can't place the pool.
We'd use the space that would be necessary for a contingency plan of a second item on the site, I think is what you're getting.
Yeah, or or I mean, I mean, I don't, this might happen, probably not, we haven't done any of the engineering for village hall, so we all of a sudden find, oh, it can't go on Bourbon Street for, I don't know. But something comes up, but now we've already broke ground on the community center, and now we've like limited off, like now what do we do about that? You know, it when something's gonna jump up like that, which from private funding, I think is great, I just think we need to do a little extra planning around it, and that's all.
Alright, I have Bobby, then Judy, do you wanna say something?
Okay.
What about Bobby?
I was gonna, one, the picture you had up above.
Sorry.
Are you kind of saying like where should we place the wellness center on that land, like we would have, they, if the prime spot on that lot is the top left, the top left, we wanna say that's where the first building goes? Or would that be better for the pool to be at this? You know, is that kind of what you're saying is?
Yeah.
Doing the first building, the first, the best spot for you want.
Or if you.
Both, hold, can I, it's Judy and then Sarah, no, that's right.
And we've, remind me, how many acres of that?
Fourteen, no, sixteen point six.
And we're all of that, the community centers, I think, for one point five acre. Yeah, so we have ten other acres, more than ten other acres to to adjust places, so I'm not sure what the discussion is.
Well, I guess, I think it, I think they can all fit there and work, I think it's positioning of it, like for example, the pool is an outdoor facility. There's going to be noise, things like that, whereas the the facility that's inside, not going to be so much noise, so it might make sense to position them away from houses or where the parking lot goes, it might make sense, or maybe with their shared there's things that we can share, that maybe in the long run, we'd save money, if we just do some planning upfront to see where they can all fit.
Sure, parking lots, driving lanes, yeah, that's, that's.
So, okay, so how 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 do you do that?
Well, I think what we're missing, um and I understand City of Eau Claire is substantially larger, had a lot more resources to do this, right, but they had like, it was their equivalent of a planning commission, right, you know, and we're way behind the eight ball on this, but you know, they identified particular locations in the village, or a village, the city for, you know, city buildings, and so they would say, well, we were gonna have to build a new city hall over here is great, and then over there is our second choice, and then over here is our third choice, and then they did that for a bunch of different buildings, so then as stuff became available for sale, as projects adjusted, as you know, they, you know, if something didn't work with one thing or another, they would they already have kind of a plan or outline where things go, we just have this big look at land, we just hope everything's gonna fit there or whatever we want to fit there, right? We just, we've never taken that extra step to really have, I think, nice conversations, where should the new pool go? Which I know we're starting right now, where should cold storage be, or you know, the library expansion, now how are you gonna do that if the pool ends up where, right where it is, you know, it it it, I just feel like that's the conversation that hasn't happened.
Look, I'm I'm a little, here's my confusion. Last month, we uh majority of the board chose to spend fourteen thousand doing a feasibility study for Evergreen, right? But now we're saying, well, maybe that's not the spot for it, maybe it's somewhere else, I'm I'm trying to I hear what you're saying on the planning, but it seems like we've already somewhat bypassed it, in my head, I see village hall, police department sixteen oh one Bourbon. I see the pool, if we build a new one off of Evergreen. I see a community center if that gets built uh off of Evergreen, so I'm trying to figure out, you say there's me, it seems like there's been a lot of planning um that has happened. Now for alternative sites, I think that's a valid point. If for some reason the feasibility study shows you can't build a pool there, then I would would agree with you that you have to look, but the question is, do we spend all? Would agree with you that you have to look, but the question is, do we spend all the time and money to do that? Or do we wait until it says? Hey, I'm sorry, you can't build a pool here. Then it goes back and say, okay, where is another spot for it? I mean, we're real limited, right? I mean, really, the only public property that we have. That has any size to put multiple buildings on is Evergreen, right? There is no other spot in the village. And I hear what you're saying and I I I think. I think there has been planning, um. You're correct that. That site is the second site for village hall, police department, if it couldn't, but I could see that. If all of a sudden the pool there, it may be this site we have to handle. I don't know. Um, but again, I I'm just trying to figure out how we get to where you wanna get. That's what I'm trying to, what data do we use? Or, cause we're already. You know, you gotta fees, uh, we're spending fourteen thousand bucks on a feasibility study for a pool at that site. I don't really wanna say, well, maybe this, maybe Bourbon Road is the right site. Now, cause everybody's gonna say, well, why'd you spend the money there? You made that decision. Now, if something happens, then I think we have to find. Another possibility. So I'm 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 trying to figure out how to get to where you wanna get to.
I mean, even with what you just said was more than, I guess, I I've heard at least like, let's just take the village hall for a second. Like if it doesn't work here, you talk about this site might be a potential like.
Look on that uh, on that timeline you got, when did we vote on the site? What date was that?
Uh. February twenty eighth, twenty two.
All right, at that point is when we decided that that was the site, that was backup site.
For village hall?
Mm-hmm. Those were the, we we started with eight sites and then we limited to two.
Okay.
And then we picked the best of the two.
Right, so that one's primary, that one's secondary.
At the time of February twenty seventh.
The time of February twenty eighth.
Granted, there was no pool, there was no community center talked about.
Well, the pool was, the pool was at least a little more on the radar because it was, you know, second there. Not that we did any official planning for it, but like, you know, the planning committee did talk about when I was on it prior to February twenty eighth. Thirty thousand Evergreen Parkway having like a.
Is there on there when the report was done on uh, uh, prioritizing of staff and. And uh, facilities, is that on that timeline?
No.
Okay. We'd have to go back to, I don't know if it was before or after.
Anyway, again, privately funded community center is great. I'm not saying you're doing wrong with that, but you have something jump that high in the priority queue, you just. You have, without eyes and prospecting.
I think that's how it's a priority once you have funding, when the funding was in process.
And I guess I'm not. Maybe I'm missing something. I don't see it jumping anything. I think they're years away potentially. Of getting the money to pay for that and everything. So I'm, I I guess I'm kinda, I don't see this thing being built this year or next year. So I don't, I don't, when you say jumping ahead of everything, I'm not sure. I mean, we really haven't really, besides say, we're willing to give land.
Yeah.
You know, we've now given, Doug's gonna take one and we, some staff is getting involved. A little bit, but I. I I'm not, at least I'm not thinking it's jumping anything.
I mean, I had to feel, uh, I mean, just one resident talked to me last week about um, uh, how I think it was the Middleton Times Tribune. You know, had they reported that the village was gonna fund the other half of the law. So like, and I told this person that that was totally not true, that didn't happen. But again, that's what makes. Me and other people think that this project is gonna happen a lot sooner than in a couple of years timeline, right? You know, uh, and I obviously can't control the newspaper reports or whatever, but like.
And and that's gonna be wrong. I I think if Doug. Yeah, if Doug, if somebody comes up like they did at the football, you know, stadium and says, hey, I'll donate three million for it, I think it will move, right? I mean, I.
It has to.
Yeah, but I I don't see the jumping anything. I don't think it's. I don't think we're gonna do the community center and say, okay, now we're not gonna do village hall or we're not gonna do pool. I think, I think they're on separate tracks. That's how I look at it, but.
I just worry if one track.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know, I, we build the, let's just say we build the wellness center and then we're gonna go put a pool down and we go, man. Really terrible.
I should have worked out good for the study to come back.
Right, yes, and I think that's an important step, but.
Talked about sharing parking lots, talked about.
Yeah, but those are the things that haven't happened. Man, I wish that parking lot didn't go there because now that, you know.
But we haven't approved any plan yet, so nothing's been decided. Nothing's been decided except for we're gonna, we've given them the impression that we're gonna let them use land.
Yeah.
That, that's it. I don't think anything else has been voted on.
On November twenty thirty.
We got one point two five. And we're trying to get one point two five.
And we did some.
So whatever.
Right, but what I'm saying is.
To the location, three thousand Evergreen Parkway in.
Yeah, yeah, in there, yeah, that's true, but that's the land.
So then now, you know, if you're gonna put a pool there. I mean, I don't think we're gonna put a pool there, but if you had to, because that site didn't work out or something.
Yeah.
It just, that's, that's the only, just as someone who kind of thought about piecing that all together, where the parking lot would go and all that stuff.
Right. Judy and then Cody.
And when the pool starts, when the pool does come up, and you're trying to get the, on the down there moment, I might ask for a referendum for that. I don't know if the pool referendum would ask that, really, give me a question this a week, so.
Cody. From the vague drawings that aren't solid, they're in the. Very corner of that. Lot, left lot, so it's, you're not gonna wedge a pool in there. They're going, they're, the proposal. Or like the dream, if you will, was in like the most. Least used part of that parcel. Well, so that leaves you fifteen other acres to figure out where to put a pool in a village hall, and a cold storage facility.
I think the image that we see since this is the offer pretty, they did have a pool over in the top level. I mean.
Well, that, yeah, no, add it to the right of, they have a big building.
Okay.
City hall, then community center, then the pool.
Just looking at this, you know, I don't know how much of that is actually. The wall, I mean, there's the stormwater stuff, you know, I don't even know what you could do there. I mean, it's created a certain way, so.
Yeah, but that's all, just so you know, those were, those uh, holding ponds that you see.
Mm-hmm.
Until you get to your development, were just there. They have no significance.
Oh, okay, I didn't know.
No, I didn't know that either, but that's what the engineers heard.
Okay, so that's all. If we don't wanna take any action, that's, I mean, that's. That's fine. It's just I would hate to. You know, get to a point where it was like, man, wish we would have done something different and it would have just taken. A little bit more planning to to get there, that's all. Engineering designs, just, you know.
Figure out exactly what you're looking for and how do we get to there? That's the part that.
It's supposed to be aware that. When we get further along with the wellness center, that we're, where are we?
Yeah, 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 no, I understand. I think that's correct. Yeah, if it's awareness, then I think that's, that's fine. If it's a report or something and decision making, I don't know. If we'll ever get that at this point, till we get more information.
Yeah, and I think that's fine. I don't, I don't, I wasn't expecting any particular action tonight.
Okay.
More awareness for this group and the planning committee, right? Cause they're, they're gonna get, oh, first whack and everything anyways.
Alrighty. Let's go to discussion and possible action regarding administrative fee for a sewer adjustment request. This came out of finance. Um. And what it's basically looking at since staff spends. Um. Time on notifying people and then processing. Um, and collecting data for adjustments to the bill that there should be uh. Administrative charge to uh, the person for filing. You got the, potentially it's seven hundred and fifty bucks. Okay, so I have Cameron and then Judy, I mean, Judy.
And this was one of my questions earlier when someone said to me, um, so if I'm watering my lawn, would it just, do I, would they come and say that they want anything adjusted? Cause they're watering their lawn during the growth.
Yeah, it would be they could do it, but they would not get approved.
Right, you need, you needed, you needed to do the thing I wanted to do like six months ago for that.
But then, but the people putting in new lawns, they get to?
No, they they absolutely couldn't apply, even if it's intentional.
Yeah.
They could say they ran it, they went down, read their meter, they watered their yard for four hours, and down the meter said, I put four thousand gallons down on the yard. They absolutely could come in.
I see.
Yeah, I think we gotta latch this right now, girl, I really do.
Okay. Cameron?
Right, it's in retrospect, well, no, I'm not gonna say it's not. Anyway, uh, I, my experience when I moved to village, we had no idea. The water rate was so high, we had no idea, whatever. And we didn't even really get a choice, right? You know, all the sprinkler systems are already booked up to, and I made a thing that, you know, first companies, Brittany put down to establish the yard. And then all of a sudden, across, you know, June and July, our water bills were over eight hundred dollars. I mean, it would be. I mean, I'm very happy that the village adjusted that for me, cause that is insanely high amounts. For, you know, to be, you know, kind of surprise charge for when you just moved to the community. But I would have been really mad, because I've already mad, but I've been doubly mad, um, you know, if I was slapped with a a twenty five dollar administration fee. To like get that very, very high charge uh, waived. Um, so I don't, I I. I understand that it does cost money for us to to do these. I understand, you know, like the total cost was was a little over uh, almost fifteen hundred dollars uh, this year, but um. I don't know, if this is people moving to the community. You know, we don't really wanna really sour taste in their mouth.
But that's what works back to the developer, like Brittany should have warned, I mean, that's where we had this discussion a long time ago.
It wouldn't have made me happier if, you know.
But they need to warn their people.
I know, but you guys, if I came to you guys and you said, well, Brittany should have told you. It doesn't, that one really.
Yeah, I I don't wanna get back into off on our water rates or anything. The question is. Should we charge an administrative fee to go through this process? Because there is a cost. To uh, the village. That's kind of where I like the.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, everybody.
If I called and I had a four hundred dollar water bill and they're like, you have to verify it, if there's a twenty five dollar administrative fee to have that waived, I'd be like, okay. Not, uh, not promotion, maybe give warning, many times when the bill gets high, you get something fixed, so it is a little bit of a service.
Well, okay, I think Sarah and then Cameron.
Well, I was just going to say, but. You might. They're not gonna say, you have to be twenty five dollars for the way, it's twenty five dollars to check. And they not come back and say, no, no. And you're all twenty five dollars. So, I mean.
Cameron?
I I was just, I was gonna say, like, yes, I think it's great that we proactively judge the people. Well, I mean, do we, are we in a charge of administration fee for that?
No, ideal. It's when people do the appeal.
So, but but when we talked about this last time, Bobby, correct me if I'm wrong. Becky has some process where she's already, you know, watching. People, and if someone has a substantial jump, you know, we would be very nicely let them know and say, hey, by the way, something's broken or, you know. I mean, should we stop doing that?
No, they do.
Probably pay yours, because my toilet was leaking. So she was very nice and I, well, the plumber, I got it fixed, but I paid my high bill, I paid it. I didn't ask for.
Right, so if you, if you wanna appeal, I mean, this is not, again, it's not something that is unique. Almost everywhere when you appeal, there's a cost to it, cause there's an administrative cost to it. You know? If you pay it all, then.
I mean, I do think that makes sense though, with the, the people who are new, like is that? I have never heard of that happening in any other community. Where you built a new house, you're getting a lawn. We, thankfully, when we built our house, it was the right time of year, so we didn't get the ridiculously high water bill, but for many people they. Did, and I just, I don't know if that's a normal thing. I don't know, it was, it is normal.
Uh, I just, you know, I brought the data to this group. It's not a normal thing. I cannot find a single municipality. In the state of Wisconsin. Who has cheaper water. We we are number one, the most expensive water in sewage. That is, that is why we are a weird use case.
I I'm gonna. I think sewer, you're probably correct. I'm not sure water is correct.
No, I'm mind.
Oh, okay.
Combined.
I think our water. Is reasonable and within there.
I agree.
That is managed by the.
I agree. My analysis was done on this, how sold would pay.
Right, understood. I I I just wanna make sure we're correct on it. It's, it's the sewer portion of our, not the water part. And that's why we reduce it, because that water's going out, it's not into the sewer. But the question is, it's just. You know, the the, from finance, you know, they feel that, again, it's a user fee. You know, get, use this service, you're getting a return on it. Here, we need to recoup some of the cost. I and again, I don't, it's, it's a low amount, seven hundred and fifty, but I think it sends a message.
Yeah, I just, I guess, I do, I do not support this.
Okay.
It feels like. We, we have the problem and then we're also going to nickel and dime you on top of it to resolve the problem that we created for you. It seems like a really bad business proposition, if you know. But again, that's why I don't support it, that's fine.
What if you wait to do the, there's something to do. What if you charge a fee upon his.
See, and I I guess, I I I differ a hundred percent. When you water your lawn, that is your choice. The village is not. Telling you to water your lawn or do it. That is a choice you make, so. If it was where it was the village fault, then I would agree with you, but you're making a conscious effort to do that, unintentional to do it, so. Now, if you don't know the cost of doing that. I can see the village taking some responsibility because we didn't warn you, but it's still somewhat your responsibility to know what water rates are in the sewer. That's just. So I don't wanna uh, do the. Yeah.
I'll make a motion to support the administrative fee for the sewer adjustment request of twenty five dollars.
I will say that.
We have a motion and it's not getting any more discussion.
I I just wanna say that I am not in favor of it at all. I think most people come to the village days, that was their yard intermittently throughout the year. Certain people do use this. To recap filling a private swimming pool or making an ice cream. A lot of those people are very knowledgeable and that will go down, read their meter, do what they're doing, read it again and send it in. Altering a minimal staff time to actually generate the refund that's required because they know what's going on. Granted, they have to look at some papers, et cetera, but once. Yards are established and you're having these eight hundred dollar bills with yards, it becomes, I think, a service that should be provided by the utility and shouldn't be charging our residents for it.
All right, so uh, we'll do a roll call, while it seems like.
Dusty Brooklyn?
Did you say Brooklyn? Sorry.
Yes.
Okay, there's too many people last names.
They are, yes.
No.
Dusty Borcar, no, Dusty Brenner.
Yes.
Dusty Brenner.
Yes.
Dusty Calvert.
Yes.
Dusty Paul.
No. Yes. So did, so we have four, three, okay. Fifteen, discussion and possible action, annual village ethics acknowledgement form. Either Cameron or I can take this one.
Uh, Ryan, I don't, I don't have enough dates since it came to the board last.
Yeah, yeah, basically, we brought this before village, uh, at our last village staff meeting, uh, ran it by Paul, our village attorney, just for consensus agreement that the form that was presented is um. Uh, a usable form, there's no problems with that. Uh, we kind of ironed out a process by which the village clerk will administer this um, and notify. I believe notify the committee chairs. Um, following the annual election process um, for appointments to new village um, committees. Um, to have them. Get these signed forms within their respective committees and then return that to the village clerk. And then the process will be that the village clerk will form. It's an electronic or a paper copy. I don't know if we ever ironed out that detail of how we're gonna have those forms saved, but there will be a file within the village office that they'll be retained in. Um, and it was recommended to do this on an annual basis.
Any of the ordinance listed, lists it very specifically that way.
It's all employees, all committee, everybody tied to the village. That's how our uh, village attorney. Thought we should do it and he thinks we should do it every year versus. You know, just once in a while, you know what I mean?
Unless we change the ordinance.
Does he think, I was just gonna say, does he think that because of the way the ordinance is written, that ordinance we could rewrite, whereas like when you first accept your role?
I I I think it's because of the ordinance, but I think. He was saying that is pretty consistent to what.
Yeah, I think he said he'd, he'd lean against making. Ordinance changes and try to just consistently apply. Um, it's easier to do it that way than modifying and. Changing that again at a later time.
Could you do like a docu-sign online so that we can, it's not paper?
Well, we got.
It's certainly easier, so it's easier to manage, cause like if you're gonna do it, you're gonna have.
You have, which would be easier just to bring six of them to your meeting and hand, like, if I had to do it for you guys, I just hand them all out at the beginning of the meeting. Please sign it, then I collect it, give it to Bobby.
Like having to file it, scan it, file it, scan it, or.
I know, but I don't wanna be tracking people down, calling and saying, hey, Cody, get in there and sign this, you know. I don't know, I, I think.
What I'm saying, I think you could send.
I think you're right, I've seen that.
Cause then I could send out like email to person, like, hey, guys, sign this and forward it.
But you have to, if I remember, cause I've only used it once, you have to download the program, right? To get it, so you can get onto the docu-sign. You know, it's going, it's going.
Put your, look, there's also, there's also an online call job. It's unbelievable, what they can do electronically, but I don't know. Yeah, people wanna write signature on certain governments.
Well, we could ask, we, we're gonna see him in a couple of weeks, we could ask that, cause then she could send it out to all emails and I do click on the attachment and.
If you, if you want to use DocuSign or Jot to sign, it's free. But if you want to be, be a person who is, who do think the documents can be signed. So we would have to pay for it, village, but.
But it's called that.
Well, anyways, you gotta do it yearly, I guess we'll, okay with staff to try to figure out what's the best for them? How they wanna do it, but it was pretty clear we all are gonna have to sign them and looking at May doing it, you know, get it done.
And do it at the border review.
Do it, I'm just thinking.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get it, but that was a good catch, we should be doing it.
I wouldn't say I want an apology on the record for finding this. To cause so much work.
No, no, it's a good thing, and that's the thing, sometimes they get lost, cause we don't do it every year and we lost, so now we're gonna get back on track and. If we say, even if it's done at committees, that may meeting. Everybody gets the signatures from their, their committee, you know, then we're in good shape, then we're just tracking down the people who missed. Or we send it out to everybody and have them sign it on the internet.
Is it something the library board has to?
Yeah, it would be every anybody.
Well, yeah, cause I appoint them. But, yeah, I appoint them all. That's how state statute is, it's very weird. I, I tried to learn. I, no, we, we approved everyone.
Oh.
Yeah, Pam, we just checked that, cause she didn't think so, cause the last spot was town across plains. And I said, well, if you read statute, it says of municipality that you're located in, even though it's a representative from town. So, I, I, we just checked on that probably three months ago. I would think not, no, because they're a separate district, but I could see the library being a separate entity too, so. I don't know what kind of our ordinances we can enforce upon somebody, I don't know. I really don't know. We can ask about the library board. I just know I appoint them. There's two, the state law does not make things simple. Alright, we're good with that, okay. Discussion and possible action, village donation policy. You all have that, this was uh something the chief wrote, but it was. To give guidelines and checks and balances that when people wanna donate to different departments or projects or something. We have a process that there's checks and balances and people can follow.
So I had a little bit of a problem kind of following all of this, I don't really know why, but I like read it like three times and it was like, okay. But if I tried this thing, like what, what would happen? And I wasn't sure, because like we, like, uh, a recent thing was assigned for a park. It would just, like, for me, what would happen? Like, what is, what is the process now if I wanted to sign in a park?
It would go to Mike. Are they under a thousand bucks?
Oh, or like you're saying with a monumental sign?
Well, what's the most real, I, I, I thought we had to go to the whole sign, um. Uh, yeah, get the approval standard and stuff, then it was because someone donated for a sign, and I was like, take it off. Right, yeah, okay, so just, yeah, walk me through the process of something.
More or less getting it out, really open, so it's, it's, they go to the portion that they should be. Maybe, I, for them to discuss, look over, say yes or no, pass it on to those boards. So it's really, this gives, this, this really gives us a free line for all, all of our donations.
So the chief wrote this, so my understanding, if it's a thousand or more, it's gotta come to the board. If it's under, then. Brian can approve it. Is that?
Yeah.
That's.
And, and there was more to cover monetary.
Yeah.
Um, they're gonna, all major ticket items have been a little over a thousand, so. Look at that. These are more for donation of. We are a bad, bad memorial program set up, you know, the batches and trees, most of them are under a thousand, but they still. Um, providing there within the, random, the potter stuff within that program, they haven't necessarily went to the committee or boards, but. Um, you know, this, I mean, that's a good change actually, that's something that.
Really expensive then, but, yeah.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion then? I, I just, I, I need a motion to accept the village donation policy.
I'll make a motion to accept the village donation policy as presented by Chief.
Yeah, motion and second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all polls same. Alright, discussion and possible action, Xander Park Broad Boardwalk. Lighting, um, this was uh. Sent to, if you remember, it was sent to finance and, um. Parks and Recreation Finance was to look at possible way of using uh. Money that's being spent on village hall. Police Department on the economic development, which was the restrooms and extended parking lot. To help pay for the lighting on boardwalk, combine the three, so what you have here is. A call, a estimate of what uh monies we would have in kind for matches, so. You know, the standard for what uh bathrooms at Bear Park, there were six uh by eight. Three hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, so that's what potentially the cost of the outside restrooms for city hall is. The parking lot was calculated, uh, you're paying eighty five thousand, put some stalls in, found by Ace Hardware there. The cost there divided it by the number of stalls and that gave the cost, so. Uh, again, it's gonna probably move, I'm not sure if we'll have fifty. That fifty is if there's a hundred parking stalls, fifty would go towards uh village hall, please, fifty would be considered. The economic development, so we did a cost analysis on that. Uh, then we just listed, we did some internet searching on the different areas that because it's a trail, because it's by a park. Because it's economic development, that these areas might have grant money. And then we'd be able to use our investment in there as a match. So the recommendation now. Is to send this information to Parks and Recreation, so they can move forward on, on the whole thing of looking at the likes and. Getting the cost and all that good stuff. So this, we're only asking for this board to refer this memo to Parks and Recreation Committee.
We need a motion.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah.
I'll make a motion to move the lighting and matching ground opportunity to the Parks and Recreation.
We have a second. I have a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say. You what? You voted against it, okay, I'm sorry. Alright, future agenda items. Alright, we have a closed session, so I would like everybody to leave except for the board. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, thank you. Okay, I have a motion and a second to go on closed session, discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Dusty Calvater?
Yeah.
Dusty Brad.
Yes.
Dusty Pomakowski.
Yeah. Yeah.
Dusty Brunner.
Yeah.
Dusty Borcar, yes, presently.
Yes. A motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye. Uh, aye, all polls same, the move. Thank you. We got out before, one minute before nine.
Well, they would let you start on time.